So they weren't hired to look at the pump station or the other pump stations around town or the internal system, but they're going to present on what they found with the force main.
Like Tony had said, we were hired last spring, right around spring, we started our work and I think you're gonna have to do it. Okay, so our scope of work was the Lowlands Pumping Station Force Main. It's a critical asset, it may be one of the most critical assets for the town. All sewage from the, all wastewater from the town, Little Nahont, Nahont comes to this pumping station at the end of the dead end on Ward. It's the Lowland Pumping Station, so all wastewater in the town goes to this location. There's pumps in here, and from this station, they pump through an 18-inch pipe all the way to the Lynn Wastewater Treatment Plant where it gets treated. So this presentation, I'm just going to, we're going to do a little bit of background so everybody gets up to speed as to where everything is. I'll go over what condition assessments we did of the pipeline, and then what the alternatives were and how it was prioritized. So I think what we're going to do here is, we're going to try to work some magic. We never have technical difficulties, it's, here we go. So if you can just pause it right here for a second. So just to, I think everybody's familiar with what Nahont looks like. You can see the entire peninsula, Little Nahont, from the bottom of the screen north up to the Rotary and then bearing left toward, down the Linway to the Treatment Plant. So what we had done here was we created, it was a 3D model to help us with the evaluations of the, of the pipeline. This is a little animation, it's only like two minutes long, but if you want to stop right there, Andrew. Right, right at the bottom of the screen, right there, thank you. That's the, this is Ward Street, that's the pumping station. That's the Lowlands Pumping Station, all the wastewater comes to that one location. What our job was, and what Tony mentioned was, the failures of the pipeline that go from this pumping station to Lynn. So if you look at this, you can see, there's my little dot, there it is. See the screen line right there? That's the 18-inch force main. And if you want to just hold it right there. So the 18-inch force main is pretty much right in the middle of the road at this time, over by the Dunkin' Donuts and the Tides. Maybe you can point to it, Andrew, the Tides. Yep, right there, exactly. From there, actually, the force main kind of takes a right east and it goes along the parking lot and the beach area, so you can just keep going there. This is, the pipelines made out of ductile iron. It was built in 1983, and this is a 35-year-old force main. For ductile iron, that's a fairly long time. If you want to just hold it right over here too, yep. So it goes up past the MDC Swimming Building. It goes across the street there at the MDC, goes over to the park, there it is, right there. The park on this side, and then goes down to the Linway. So this is where the, this is where the, the condition of the pipe really gets seriously impaired, so if you want to keep going now. So what we did here is, we changed the color of the force main from green to this purple magenta. So you can see it over by the tennis courts, it comes around, and now the pipeline goes right down the middle of the road, downward, the island, through the median, just to the harbor side. And you can see Market and Broad coming in over there. Right over here, maybe a little bit more, yeah. It does a little jogging to get out of the way of other utilities, and then it continues down to Gas Wharf Road. And from there, right over in here, it takes a left and goes into the Treatment Plant over there. That whole area, the magenta area, is the most critical portion. That's where the condition is the worst. As part of our scope of work, we also evaluated the Willow Road Pump Force Main. There's a, there's a small pumping station down at the end of Wharf. Let's see. Right down over here. And for those residents who live around that area, last August, September, there was a break right at the pumping station right over here. This one, there's, there's really not a lot of plans for this pipeline. This is small, 10-inch. It goes all along the road, and it goes across the harbor area to the Ocean View, down by where the golf course, it meets with the golf course, as you can see. So another long force main, old force main. This one's had a series of breaks as well. And once it ends, the force main ends right here, it goes to a gravity sewer that goes through the golf course and goes all the way to the Lowlands Pumping Station. So that's the animation, that's just as a little background of what we're talking about. So we'll go back to the presentation. So again, just as background, 18-inch diameter, length is three miles long, age is 35 years old, ductile iron cement lined and bituminous coated, just traditional for that type, but what we've, the problem area is right up there on the Linway from what we discovered, so. Here's, here's a profile, I know it might be a little bit tough to see, but here's a profile of it. This would be the Lowlands Pumping Station over here, and on the right, that would be where the Lynn Wastewater Treatment Plant is. Although it is relatively flat, the pipeline's relatively fat, flat, this is the pipeline here, and up there is the, the grade of the road. There are a series of, at high points, air release manholes, and at the low points, cleanout manholes, there's about six each. And when the pipeline goes through those manholes, you can actually physically see the pipe, and you can do a condition assessment on the pipe. So, so what, what was experiencing in the causes for all those breaks, there's two major causes. One of them is a hydrogen sulfide corrosion. That's a corrosion that occurs inside the pipe. You're picturing this long force main that's three miles long, that has a lot of bacteria. It takes a long time to get from one point all the way to the Treatment Plant, and while it's in there, a lot of biological activity happens. The further you, the closer you get to the Treatment Plant, the more you see. That biological activity creates hydrogen sulfide gas, which then converts to sulfuric acid. And this was a pipeline in another not-so-lucky Massachusetts community. This ductile iron pipe was only 15 years old, and the corrosion was so bad, it literally ate away at the top of the pipe. You haven't experienced that yet, it's not nearly to this, but you are getting close to a very, very thin wall on the pipe. Now this one over here, this is electrolysis corrosion. You can see these holes right in here, and this is the pipeline. This is the, this is Zach's first day on the job. And the cause of this is, ductile iron being a metal, if there's stray currents in the ground from grounding grids or from major duck banks, underground duck banks, the duck banks put a charge into the ground, and the pipeline acts as a wire. What ends up happening is the gasket, when you put two of the pipes together, the gasket acts as a barrier, so it wants, the current jumps around it, and it causes flaking and pitting, and that's what causes that type of corrosion. So along the Linway, there's multiple duck banks, large duck banks, and it's also at the tail end of the force main. So this one, the Linway is experiencing both of these types of corrosion. So what we did was, all the manholes, both clean, the cleanouts and the air release, we used these ultrasonic thickness testers. You put them on the pipe, and they're extremely accurate. This is a picture of us going at one of the manholes. And why don't we put up, this is the, really a kind of a critical slide, this next one. Just a second. Okay, we'll start at the bottom. Yep, so pipe wall thickness. So a piece of ductile iron pipe, if it was brand-new, back in 1983, the wall thickness would be about a half, half an inch. So you can see down by, this is, where are we here? I don't know, maybe you can point to it? Oh, there it is. My thing's dying, I think. Okay, right here, there's Little Nahont. Here's the pumping station. There's an air release and a cleanout manhole, so you can see what we, the thickness we recorded, the actual thickness was pretty good. It's almost like 100% of like new pipe. But now as we keep going north, along the beach, this is where the Rotary is, this is where it starts to get bad. And you can see how it's being reduced to the point over here where there's only really 25% left of the pipe. So it's supposed to be a half an inch, it's only .1 inches, just as it gets closer to the Treatment Plant. So it's not surprising, it, for the age of the pipe, it just means that this is a very susceptible pipe right there, so.
Are those measurements taken specifically at those manhole access points?
Yep, yep. We entered the manholes, we de-watered them, we went down, and we used that exact same probe right there. And fortunately, there was enough manholes that we were able to, you know, get a really good profile of what was happening to the wall thickness, Josh. So, that was the condition assessment. After that, we took the next step and said, okay, we've got a pipeline that's certainly reaching the end of its service life. What are the different options to do either a repair or a relining? So we looked at different options. We've got typical dig and replace, traditional, using a structural cured-in-place liner, slip lining, pipe bursting, micro tunneling, and a cross harbor directional drill. That was an option that was presented just prior to us, and was at, we were asked to do a further evaluation of that. So this, this boat right here, I know Josh, you were there that morning, I'm not a geologist, I'm an engineer, but this boat has all geologic information, instruments on it, very expensive. We worked out on the harbor for two days. We wanted to see what the feasibility of use, of doing the cross harbor approach would be, so if you move to the next one. It comes up with this very detailed plan. Like I said, I'm not a hydrogeologist, but what this is telling you right down, and this is a profile that would go from the Rotary all the way to the Treatment Plant, right across the harbor. And the instrumentation picks up what the, what the top surface is below the water, and the red line is where the ledge is. So to do a directional drill, you would need to know that information. And unfortunately, it wasn't, the, the length of pipe that we need to do, which would be over like three, almost 4,000 feet there, we would need to be at such a depth that really made this option kind of fall, fall to the wayside. We were looking at like $40 million just to do a cross bay. And the reason is, is you can do a directional drill like 100 feet, and all you need to be is like five feet deep. Maybe 1,000 feet to 2,000, to 1,000 feet, you'd need to be 10 feet deep, 15. But to do one this deep, you really need to really go down to at least 40 feet. We had a bunch of major drilling contractors say that they need to, to be at a certain depth. And the reason is, the directional drilling, it's a drill plus it's pressure drilling fluid, and when you get to a distance of 4,000 feet, the pressure is, really becomes high, and if you don't have enough soil or rock above you, it'll frac out and then it'll be in the harbor, so. So we eliminated this, this option, it just was, just too costly. Go to the next one. This one was another one that we thought might be a creative solution if we did a little micro tunneling under all the utilities in the, in the Linway, but again, the price really, once we started putting the, putting the numbers together, we're like above 30, 30 million, so we eliminated this one. The good news is that we did find, come up with three good alternatives, really good. One of them, you know, the dig and replace method, that's traditional, that's feasible. Another one is a cured-in-place liner, where we, where we line the existing pipe. And then the other one is a slip lining approach, similar to the cured-in-place liner, only it's a pipe within a pipe, similar to this picture here, where you pull another pipe through the old pipe, just using the existing pipe as a host. And that's a structural liner. All of these options would be using PVC or HDPE pipe, which has no, which is, and has no, hydrogen sulfide corrosion has no effect on it, and also it, electrolysis stray currents have no effect on it. So really, the life of the pipe would be at a minimum 50 years, whether we do dig and replace, or the liner, or the slip lining, we would use either those two materials. So there's some prices up there, and we've got the Linway first. You know, we're, we're going through the recommendations now, but it looks like the most cost-effective is the slip lining approach. To do that whole thousand feet, it's about 6 million with, with engineering and construction. The Causeway piece, which is longer but a lot easier to do, it's not, it doesn't have to fight the $40,000, 40,000 cars a day, that one, what we have there, 6.8. And then Willow Road, which is a much smaller pipe, we would do that as a traditional dig and replace. That, that was the most cost-effective, and that would be about a little over 2 million. So the priority, I think it's wise to obviously do the Linway first, and after that, Willow, and then finally the Causeway. And these are the lengths and the, and the costs, and I know, Tony, you had some other thoughts on that.
Yeah, so as I mentioned before, our biggest, our most costly repairs are when the force main goes down, because we have to pump our wastewater with trucks from the island to Lynn Water Sewer, and it's extremely costly. So we want to identify or try to attack those problems first. So our pump station at Ward Road has a number of critical repairs that are needed. So what I, how I would prioritize this is, one, the Linway, from the Rotary to Lynn Water Sewer, and two, the, the most critical repairs at the pump station on Ward Road. Then I would go to Willow Road, which, the convenient part about Willow Road is, we wouldn't have to set up a temporary bypass. We could just dig, put in a new pipe, and then switch over to it, so it's, it's much easier that way. And then lastly, the Causeway. You had mentioned that the Causeway is, you know, it's got a pretty good thickness on it, it's probably about 10 years, eight, 10 years down the road where we really need to start approaching that problem. And then trickled in, probably after attacking the Linway and the pumps, and the main pump station at Ward Road, would be the critical repairs at our other pump stations around town and our internal network. So Dan Coughlin has done a, an assessment of our, you know, our four-inch, six-inch, and eight-inch laterals, and has put together a, an assessment of where the most critical needs are, are in that as well, but, you know, those are, those are important, especially for our II issues, but it's just, it's not, you know, you're not talking about hundred-thousand-dollar breaks when those repairs are needed. So we will be putting, we will have an article, a borrowing article, at the, at the town meeting this, this May, to authorize the town to borrow the remaining amount of funds needed for the Linway and the critical repairs at the pump, at the pump station. So we're also looking at Sewer Rate Relief Fund, which is a good low-interest loan program. We, as I mentioned before, in 2018, the town borrowed $4 million. We have about $3.7 million left of that 4 million that we borrowed. The 300,000 of it has been spent on some of the repairs that we've had to do in the past year or so, and the assessment that we just did. So with the Linway being around 6.2 million, and around $2 million potentially for repairs at the, at the pump station, you're at around 8.2. Minus 3.7 million that we already have, we're looking at an authorization of around 4.5 million dollars. Now that, for this year, would just be the authorization, we wouldn't have to borrow that in fiscal year 20. But to get the authorization on the board, authorize, and then for us to go after SRF funding so that we can at least get started, we can use the 3.7 million to get started on the design and permitting of the Linway job, and start taking, start approaching the, the critical needs of the Ward Road pump station.
A couple of questions. For the Willow Road stretch, did you get wall thickness assessments there?
You know, that pipeline, I didn't mention it, but that's AC pipe, asbestos cement transite pipe. There's no manholes on the, on the, along the way. There's actually, really, I don't even think there's any good set of plans for that. So that's why we were saying, okay, we kind, we know where it is on the street, with, exactly what Tony said, let's not set up a bypass, leave that pipe there, let's put a brand-new one in, PVC, HDPE, build it, test it, put it online, and then decommission the old one. AC pipe, you know, that, that pipeline's even older. That's probably somewhere between 1945 and 1970 for that one. I know the pumping station itself was constructed before 1962, so, because we have some plans from the 60s of the upgrade to it. So I think that pipeline, you probably got all your money's worth out of that one as well.
I didn't hear what the critical repairs to the pumping station are. Description of that?
So we have, we have a capital plan and a, and a report that was done by Coughlin in 2016 or 17, but we also have Weston and Sampson putting together an updated capital plan for us this week. We had them out there. But we have some underground storage tanks there of oil. We have a generator that needs repairs, the pumps themselves, and, and different sorts of critical needs of the building. It's just the building, obviously that area is susceptible to flooding, so it needs, it needs a good amount of work.
Yeah, I think, I think the good news is that the building structure is in good shape. It was built well. What's happening is, is all the mechanical equipment that was put in back in 1983 is 35 years old. The switchgear, the electrical, the lights, they've all pretty much, they're at the end of their useful life, so.
The trouble, the, not to add more bad news to the situation, but the troubling piece too is that Lynn Water Sewer, they're also going through a number of capital repairs and a new operating and maintenance contract, so we're, you know, when, with Goralek Farms coming offline, we already saw an increase in our, in our sewer rates, and we're expecting to see increase in sewer rates because of the repairs that are required at the Treatment Plant that gets spread out amongst the four communities, us, Saugus, Swampscott, and Lynn. So it's, 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 there's a lot of, there's a lot of needs and a lot of costs coming down the line. And the other part about Willow Road I wanted to mention was, we know the National Grid has some gas line repairs to be doing along Willow Road, along Tudor Beach, and we even have some water main work that we'd like to be doing down there too, so there'll be some coordination on that when we get to that point.
Those pipes down the Willow Road are not very deep. The 80 wheelers that are going down there, very heavy. I'm not sure we should look at restricting the weight and truck size for Willow Road. The question I have is, the cost for going across, you know, you take the pipe down the Causeway, and then come across by the Public Works Building, you know, the state Public Works Building?
Yes, yes.
And go across the ocean, you know, the harbor there.
Oh, the harbor crossing, alternative cost? Over 40 million.
40 million?
Yeah, yep. One of the things about it is, you know, that profile that you saw there, yeah, if you go back, no, no, the, the bathymetric work on the, yeah, right there. Tony, just your seat, just one, real quick. Real fortunate, Tony. Right here? This is the ledge, right on the ledge. And this is, this is the seafloor. This gray line. This, these two marks here are actually the two channels. And this is, this is where the ledge is.
We're getting a little interference over here, but, but here's the thing about it, if you notice, these are all like 10 feet, and so over here, you know, you've got probably 20 feet of overburden, over here, you've got some more. You know, we were, we were a little bit optimistic, because we were like, see, should we have another job? We were there, we're like, reduce 20 feet, might be able to pull this off. But the drilling contractors, we were like, there's no way, it's, it's just, it'll frac out. So from there, they were, all the drilling contractors were saying, let's get into the rock. If we get into the rock, we're driving this thing down 45 feet, and then we need a spot, a hold spot in a structure where you can drain that. So if you're talking a case on 50 feet deep, it's just stupid.
I have a couple of questions, if you would. Couple things. On the Linway, I know that Swampscott's force main runs parallel to Nahont. I'm not quite sure exactly where it is. But the slip lining will require some bypass, I would imagine.
Yes, yeah.
And how, how, how long would those sections be? How, how long can you slip line? Like 10, 20 feet at a time?
Well, the slip lining option is generally about 1,000 feet. So what we were thinking, what our plan was, if you want to pull up that.
I've done a lot of bypass work, and I've worked for general contractors, so what we're thinking of is, the force main for us is here, to do a tap over here, and actually bypass all the way along this harbor side, sidewalk area. There's really not a lot of curb cuts over there. You can lay up the bypass 18-inch or up ground, HDPE, go the whole way, and then tap it over here. That way we could take the, the pipe that we need offline, and then we actually had a couple of slip lining contractors. We evaluated with them how many times we needed pins to go across to do the slip lining.
Right.
The average is about 1,000 feet. They can do up to 1,200. Some of these beds that go there, they might have to do a little bit shorter, but, you know, what you can do- But, you know, what you can do is, you can fuse, the one thing about that island is, we can fuse there, and then just bring it on in, and take, you know, just take one lane out as we need.
My question, my question was, where does Swanska's line parallel to us?
I'm not an expert on their line. I know they come in up here, they come in on Route Short Line, I believe it's on the. They're on the southbound lanes. Yeah, they're on the southbound lanes. And then, Zach, we pulled their plants at this break over here, they were still on the southbound. So they're on the other side.
My question, my question is, have we talked to Swanska? Have you looked into perhaps putting a, a bypass into, connecting the huts to Swanska at that location? To use their pipeline as a bypass, to eliminate the cost of bypassing. And not only that, but what would, it would also benefit each community in the event that something happened. You could just transfer the, the flows over to the other side.
We haven't looked into the hydraulics of that, and that would be more into the detailed design.
How much of the, how much of the cost is bypassing? Ten, twenty percent?
About fifteen percent of the cost. I believe we estimated a balance, eighty-five million dollars.
What size is Swanska's?
I think it's twenty-two, twenty-four?
So our, our eighteen inch pipe doesn't, if we do a bypass, doesn't serve them really as a, a redundant line? Because we wouldn't really be able to take on the additional capacity. It would be kind of a one-way.
Well, I mean, I, I depend, I don't know, I don't know what the, the pressures are, what the pressures are along those lines. I know that the huts, it's what, all about forty pounds? It's low pressure, right?
I would say Swanska's the same way.
Especially when it gets to that point. It's probably pretty low.
I don't know what the condition of impact is. And then you can get, it gets, it's definitely a hydraulic exercise you have to do. Because if two pump stations are pumping into a single line, even if it's only for a short period of time, they're going to go high, they're going to go riding off that curve, which means both stations are going to have lower capacity.
Just a thought.
It's an exercise that we obviously do.
Wow, I mean, yeah, okay. Couple of other questions. So you're using any sort of high-density PVC?
For, for the slip lining? Yeah, for the slip lining, that option, the one that we would recommend is, actually, it's.
Schedule eighty or something like that?
This one, I think they go by the, yeah, it's HDPE. And they're using, I believe it's a DR seventeen class. And the, the option that we're talking about there is, you know, traditionally, if you have an eighteen inch pipe and you slip line, you need to do like a, maybe go down to a fourteen inch or smaller. The, the contractor that we're looking at is actually, he comes in at the exact same size, eighteen.
That's what I was going to ask, so it's, so the, the pump curves are the same. It's not going to change that.
Exactly, you're exactly right, yep.
All right, the other question I had is, Tony, this is borrowing, is this a forty-year note that you're looking at? Or a twenty, have we looked at that?
That's what we're looking at. We could do a, we could do a, up to ten years on a short term, which the, the rates are really good. But we're also going to look at SRF, the sewer relief, which I think is a thirty-year. We actually, Dan Coughlin put in a, an application to SRF already last year, mostly for the II issues on the internal system. And I have a call in the DEP to talk about potentially amending that application a little so that it can be used for these more critical needs. We have a pretty good bond rating, so the rates are pretty similar. But if we could get a thirty-year through SRF.
That would be good.
That would be great.
One, one last question. On Willow Road project, you said it's AC pipe asbestos line. How do you deal with that? Do you just leave it in place, when you abandon it?
They, they keep changing the regulations a little bit, so we're going to have to find out. But, I mean, we could abandon it in place, just do a couple of spot test pits, and then flow fill, and just abandon it right in place. You know, obviously, I, I don't think they're going to want us to dig it out.
No.
It's a waste of time and a waste of money. And then it's going to go to a special disposal place. So I would just say that we break it at a couple of locations, put flow fill, button it up, leave it there.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, I freely confess, I'm not an engineer, but it strikes me that if a community like Lynn, we're only getting thirty-seven years out of, out of sewer pipe installation, like we've experienced, or even fifty, as you say with the PVC, we'd see a hell of a lot more streets torn up and construction going on. And so I'm not in a position to, to compare the actual experience. But are, are we in a position that we erode lines more rapidly than other, other communities? Is there something that we need to do in addition to replacing this? Because even a fifty-year replacement cycle seems like a lot of digging and expense to me.
Yeah, I think, I think pipeline, as far as like whoever the pipe manufacturer is, I think they never want to really say it's going to go above fifty years. So, I mean, if we put in an HDPE or PVC, likelihood is probably you'll get more life out of it than that. It's just manufacturers won't really want to do that.
Yeah, it's, I guess it's, it's hard to say whether we are experiencing more or less than other communities. I guess you could probably speak to that. It's based on the conditions and, well, the material of the pipe, how old it is, the conditions of the, of the, you know, its surroundings. We have tidal flow, we have gas and electric, electric, a lot of electric utilities, all in that area. I mean, most of these breaks, these big, big dollar breaks, were in the same general area, right on the Linway about where the U-Haul station is, so.
Tributeable to the stray electricity.
Yes, yes.
One, one of the things in ductile iron pipe, Mike, is ductile iron is made up of many different metals. And they sort of mix it together. And if it's not manufactured properly, you get some soft metals. And the electrolysis will attack those soft metals first. And that's why you see those holes like that. So if, if the pipe is, if you're not, if you don't have the quality control on, on the manufacturing, sometimes you can get some bad lengths of ductile iron pipe.
Well, okay, that deals with the, with the, with the rearview mirror, the, the iron pipe that we've been using. Going forward, the, the PVC will be installed inside of the existing pipe. The existing pipe will in effect be abandoned, just be an extra shell, an external shell, right?
Mm-hmm, just a host. Just like a sleeve, that's all it is, yep.
So there's no need for people in town to like change their diet or anything?
No, we, we do, we do ask the community, be careful with what, what you flush down the toilet. You know, a lot of flushable wipes nowadays cause a lot of clogging and do put a lot of stress on the system. But, you know, there's, with, with proper maintenance, we can get a decent amount of life out of this, out of this pipe and avoid, you know, the, the one point six million dollar break that we had in twenty seventeen was a three-foot section of pipe.
Well, actually, that raises a question. I'm assuming that the stray currents are not going to bother the PVC at all.
Correct, correct.
I mean, it would not be in order then to, to beef up the specs of the pipe that runs in the, in that part of the Linway where the stray currents are, are in existence. No, nothing to be gained by that, correct?
Right, if, if back in nineteen eighty-three, when they built that line, they had PVC and HDPE available, I'm sure they would have built it out of, and we wouldn't be here now, so.
Question. Do towns, all towns have a sewage system? Is the protocol of towns budget for, whether they need to not let the sewage come in, or measure and can, or you know? Towns typically have a kind of current budget in, in the area that's properly situated, to make sure that, that's what I'm saying, to prevent something that, that, a long timer, during, during the year. Or was this common just to, something like that?
Yeah, yeah, no.
It would seem like, if because of visual horizon on these things, is there a way to budget here, start there in five years, and we can buy some of it, or we can smooth out this part?
If you want to.
Question, the question was about budgeting and plant, proper planning for these types of breaks. And, you know, what type of tools can the town use to prepare itself financially for, for breaks? We have a sewer, you know, our, our water sewer rates are an enterprise fund. We do have retained earnings there that carry over from year to year. We had about six hundred thousand dollars in that in twenty seventeen that we had to deplete completely when we had that one point six million dollar break, uh, two breaks, the total of about one point six million. So there is, we do have a tool in town that we can build up some stabilization within the water sewer enterprise fund. But it's, it's, you're never going to be prepared for a six million dollar, you know, massive repair. When it, when it comes to that point, you're think, you're looking at either a short-term, long-term borrowing, grants, if you can get a hold of them, or using, like we talked about, the sewer rate relief fund, or a debt exclusion. You know, you could do a vote for a debt exclusion, basically an override that would pay for that job. So we do a good job of, we do factor that into our sewer rates to build up some, some, some retained earnings for capital planned repairs and certain emergencies.
Excuse me, if you're going to, you're going to, go to the mic. Please.
I don't know anything about this matter, but.
See him behind the, hiding.
Oh, I don't know anything about this matter, but I'm just wondering if there's anything one can do in terms of preventive maintenance, so a scope perhaps to go down and see where pipes are wearing thin and can get replaced before they actually burst? I was just wondering if that technology exists.
To do a full SCF commission.
I mean, assuming there were a good system in place, moving forward, instead of just waiting for the big bang, maybe, there could be, I guess, but I don't know anything about it, some type of scoping or something where you can actually look in to the pipes and see where it's wearing, where that electrical current is, for example, and maybe replace sections instead of waiting for things to kind of blow. Just questioning that.
It's possible, you could do, we, we consider doing a, a full on, a full assessment of the entire pipe, which basically would send a scope throughout the entire pipe. So it is possible, but it's costly. Because to do that, you have to bring in those pump trucks, kind of shut the force main down. So it's, it, it ends up becoming a cost-effective decision that you're trying to make. We were able to get a pretty good read on, on this, on this pipe by going into the manholes and, and doing a thickness assessment. And hopefully, with this repair, we'll, we'll prevent future major breaks, you know, if we get ahead of this.
For force mains like this, where the pipe is always full, the pipe's always full, it's, it's very expensive to do one of those evaluations, especially for a piece this long. Just the equipment, the instrumentation to do this, and perhaps somebody to actually put the instrumentation through is probably about two hundred and fifty thousand minimum. That doesn't even include that they want the pipe nice and clean. They want you to, what's called pigging, clean out all the sediment first, which is probably like another two hundred and fifty thousand. And then their instrumentation that they want to, they, they need to control it at a certain speed. So that means you have to bypass the whole line, which gets to, Mark, your point, doing a bypass around, that's like another half a million. So it's like, okay, we've got a, for this one, this is when we talked altogether, we're like, can we, do we really want to spend a million dollars on a pipe that we already know is, is, is breaking? We know why it's breaking, and it really, we already know that a thirty-five-year-old ductile, ductile iron pipe is about reaching its, end of its useful life. So we said, let's just hit the manholes, and it, we, we saw what we had predicted. So we just went, you know, we just need to go straight to design. So that's for force mains. For the gravity sewers that Coughlin's doing, they can send a CCTV camera in, and that, that's easily done. That's easily done. These force mains are pretty difficult.
Okay. Thank you, Tom, thank you, Andrew, very much appreciate that.
Thanks for coming in, making the presentation, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.